The October ninth, twenty twenty five, City of Friendswood Planning Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with communications from the public. In order to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed in a later regular commission agenda for discussion and our possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak during this time? Do you want to speak now or during E?
No, I'll speak now.
And go ahead and introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes.
My name is David Townsend. I spoke at the last meeting about the subdivision going in where the Klein primary property was. We had major concerns about the drainage and the way the drainage was being done. I'm representing Sun Park Estates subdivision. And the developer has changed the plans for the drainage. They have changed it to where the drainage now goes out northwest towards Briar Meadow and across Briar Meadow into the major stormwater ditch, rather than bringing it down behind our subdivision by my house and out to Sunset, which caused major flooding problems. We believe since that change has been made, it will alleviate many of the drainage problems that we have and alleviate flooding problems on Sunset. If they follow through with their plan as they proposed, we believe that'll solve a significant amount of flooding problems on Sunset. We think it's the right thing to do. And if they follow through with that drainage plan, the Sun Park Estates would like to speak in favor of their plan as they proposed, because we think it's a major improvement. One thing we would like to point out, though, is we want to make sure that that major drainage ditch that runs along Briar Meadow gets evaluated. It's one of those situations where somebody could have done it, anybody could have done it, somebody should have done it, but nobody did it. That needs to be evaluated because there's significant restrictions in that major drainage ditch that the water from that new subdivision will have to go through. There's quite a few twenty-four inch and twenty-inch culverts in there. And somebody either within the city or within the developer needs to evaluate all of that. But other than that, we're in support of the subdivision as proposed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? No? This is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting held Thursday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Conrad, Commissioner Phillips? We have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion passes? All right, next, action items. Item A, conduct a public hearing regarding a request for an amendment to the future land use map, FLUM, for the property located at four oh one West Edgewood Drive, also known as McCreeken Manor Final Plaid, a subdivision containing a three point nine one eight seven acre tract of land out of Lot Two, Block One, Friendswood, Volume two thirty-eight, Page fourteen, Sarah McKissick survey, Abstract one fifty-one, Galsin County, Friendswood, Texas, to change the FLUM from low-density residential to retail. Aubrey, go ahead, Steph, summary?
Yes, sir. So this is in relation to a zone change request. That's the next item on our agenda. The future land use map identifies the subject property as low-density residential. So in order to approve the zone change request, we have to amend the future land use map first. So the proposed change is to change the future land use from low-density residential to retail. The location of this particular property is unique because it is right on the border of commercial and residential. And as you can see in the rezoning report, it's flip-flopped back and forth several times over the years. Drainage has always been a challenge on this property. It's very flat. And the ditches on twenty-three fifty-one are very shallow as well. So drainage has just been a challenge. So the Drainage District has approved a variance to allow a pump system for detention on the property. So hopefully that will be the solution to be able to actually allow this development to go through.
Does the applicant here like to speak? No, or yes, would you like to speak? If you could just introduce yourself and...
Troy Kennedy, Kennedy Architects. Did you have any specific questions that she didn't cover?
We'd get to that in the next item.
Okay, yeah. Again, we're trying to develop this into a commercial development with, you know, a detention upon that work area we've fits some luck with the Drainage District. And we've been amenable to the pump system. We think that's going to work. So looking forward to making this development happen. A lot of people have looked at this, so.
Thank you, sir. I have no cards for this one. Does anybody like want to speak on this one? No? Next, item B, consider making a recommendation to City Council regarding item four A just discussed. Any additional staff comments, Aubrey?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion? We go to discussion first, right?
We can discuss first.
Okay, we'll move to discussion. Start with Commissioner Conrad.
Mainly what I understand here is this is just to amend what we have, what they have now to the future commercial establishment, correct?
So what we're doing is it's currently residential. They want to take it to commercial, future land use map. We have to update that before we can consider the zone change. Commissioner Phillips? Commissioner Mann?
No comments.
Commissioner Rice?
I have questions, as usual. First of all, why are we looking at CSC instead of just commercial?
Well, Community Shopping Center is the most broad district, and there is a property next to it that's zoned CSC as well. So yeah, the zone change is the next item. This is just the future land use map.
Okay, well, I understand that, but it kind of works for both, I think.
Well, this decision is, do we want to allow commercial or residential, like in general?
All right, that's it.
Okay, no comments for me. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Conrad, Commissioner Rice? We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Next, item C, conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change for the property located at four oh one West Edgewood Drive, also known as McCreeken Manor Final Plaid, a subdivision containing a three point nine one eight seven acre tract of land out of Lot Two, Block One, Friendswood, Volume two thirty-eight, Page fourteen, Sarah McKissick survey, Abstract one fifty-one, Galsin County, Friendswood, Texas, to change the zoning from single-family residential, SFR, to Community Shopping Center, CSC. Aubrey, any additional information?
So this is the request to change the zoning that's assigned to the property from single-family residential to Community Shopping Center. The property would be subject to the Community Overland District, which is twenty-three fifty-one. So the increased landscaping, encouraging certain building materials, the utilities that serve the property have to be underground and no garage bay doors facing the thoroughfare. So those things will all still apply. When they do develop the property, they will be required to plat, you know, it's platted. They'll have to get a site plan approval from the commission, so you'll see it again.
Applicant, if you'd like to speak, you'd probably be called up under item D. It's up to you. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this topic? No? Okay, item D, consider making a recommendation to City Council regarding item four C. Any additional comments, Aubrey?
From the document.
Okay, we'll go to discussion. This time we'll start with Commissioner Mann.
I recommend that we approve it. I think it fits right there and it'll be better, especially along twenty-three fifty-one there. And it's what it's bordered up against, I think it fits.
Okay, Commissioner Rice?
I still have a couple of comments or questions. This is the one that they're considering an indoor batting cage. Is there, do we have anything in place that prevents them or prevents that from being too loud for the neighbors? Since it is kind of surrounded probably seventy-five percent by residential. Don't want it to be like Rinwick where you just hear bats going all day long.
I think it's all going to be, all the baseball instruction is going to be inside.
If you could come up to the microphone, please, and just introduce yourself real quick.
Troy Kennedy, Kennedy Architecture. So there's a possibility that it could be a baseball facility. It's not inked, and so that's a potential tenant, and it would be endorsed. As it relates to sound, we're equally concerned internally because there's going to be tenants nearby. So it would be insulated and we would, you know, look to do proper sound attenuation for that.
You're welcome to stay up or...
That was my only...
Commissioner Conrad?
I don't have any questions on this.
Commissioner Phillips?
I don't have any questions.
The only thing I'll say is when we changed this the last time, we actually had concern about having a residential right there exiting out on twenty-three fifty-one. So I prefer it to be commercial.
It's a tricky spot.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve? Rice and Conrad? We have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion passes. Item F. Sorry. Item E, consider approval of the preliminary plat of Sterling Estates, also known as five oh five Briar Meadow Avenue and a former Klein Elementary School site, a subdivision of eleven point three nine two acres being lots seven and eight and block five, lots three and four and block seven, a Friendswood subdivision in the Sarah McKissick or J.R. Williams League, Abstract one fifty-one, recorded in Volume seven, page twenty-one of the Galsin County map records, City of Friendswood, Galsin County, Texas. Steph, summary, Aubrey?
Yes, so this is the preliminary plat. It's the first step in the redevelopment of the former Klein Elementary property. It will create a residential subdivision containing twenty-four lots, two blocks, and three reserves. The property is zoned SFR, and the subdivision is going to include both ninety-foot and a hundred and twenty-foot lots. But all the streets will be curb and gutter with sidewalks. The, it'll be ten-foot, so there's going to be ten-foot drainage easements. Well, actually, I'll let you talk about the drainage part. The plat was reviewed, and then also the Drainage District has reviewed and approved the preliminary plat, the drainage plan, and the final plat is on their agenda for October fourteenth.
And applicant, if you could introduce yourself?
Adam Hill, Friendswood, Texas, forever. So when we went into this job, I'm a custom home builder by nature. So I've been doing this, my first house was nineteen ninety-four. And so you have engineers involved, and then over time, like, well, I want to have the end result. And the end result of a home that we build for people is that it functions and that it works and that when I see an HEB ten years down the road, I get all fingers, not just one. So we take that same approach with the development, and I know that the city takes the same results. We look at problems in that we're not going to have a problem down the road in what could happen, because that's what they get every day. And the city has helped me so much over the years and, all right, hey, this is what we need to stop. And drainage obviously is the biggest issue. So if you look at your, the paper I provided, we have drains going in every yard all the way around the perimeter to address this. And we're taking and conveying all of our water to Briar Meadow. Now, the school had seventy-six thousand impervious feet. We're nowhere near that. So we're reducing the watershed that the landowners around are concerned about. It's hard to get that information out to them, so they come and, but I can tell you that there's, and I've said this before, there's no, the city, well, it's not going to let another house flood in this town. It's not going to happen, Drainage District's right after them. So we are looking at the end use here and not to put any problems on any of the neighbors, not to cause any problems. We just want happy homeowners all the way around the city and not to cause any impact to the staff here. And they have helped me a lot because you, there was a lot of stuff done over the years where you have sewer lines not in easements, and it's hard. It's a matrix to get it to fit with all the rules of the city. The rules of the city just keep adding up, and I understand that. And we've talked about the setbacks and the coverage. So it's just layers and layers, and I get it, but we have to look at the intent of it. But I can tell you that the subdivision is designed with everybody's best interest in mind all the way around it and the homeowners and the inside. And I will build every house in there that will function for them in what I believe is in the best interest of them and the city.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome to stay up.
Okay.
Okay, discussion. This time we'll start with Commissioner Phillips.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Conrad?
This is just the preliminary plot that we're looking at. Just by looking at it, it looks good to me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mann?
I like how you worked ostensibly with them to make sure we drain it the right direction and all that. As a preliminary plat, it looks great. I know when we get to that final, when we're talking about actual size, might address some of the questions that you had earlier about how are we going to drain it? Where is it going to go to and how that's going to work? And you're right, the city engineers and the Drainage District are going to handle that and make sure, because they're not going to let anything else flood in this town for sure.
They're tough.
I do appreciate you working through that, and I appreciate the staff helping you, as well as the city engineers and the Drainage District.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Ditto.
No questions?
I've been following it for a while.
You know, in Friendswood, we're getting down to where it's harder, places to develop. I like that you've worked with the neighbors. And this isn't a requirement, but maybe just consider something with the fences between you and your neighbors.
We are, and our goal, I have to, our goal is to put a nine-foot fence all the way around it at our cost so that, it's a big deal in my life, I don't want any back neighbors. I don't want any back neighbors. So I can, a fence makes a good neighbor. So it is our intent to do that gently and to make sure, hey, look, if you got, because there's trees, trees move dirt. If you got water coming back, we took care of it, and then you're not going to be burdened by anybody in the new section.
Yeah, like I said, that's not a requirement, I just wanted you to consider that.
It's a requirement to me.
Thank you, sir. Other than that, I have no other comments. Thank you for working with the neighbors on that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
There were a couple of minor staff comments that can be addressed on the final plat. So if you don't mind on your motion to say approve of the staff comments so that we can capture those.
I'll make the motion to approve with staff comments.
Well, I'm going to second that.
All right, Commissioner Rice, Mr. Williams. Do we have a motion of second?
Could I?
Actually, we've already left that point, I'm sorry. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Item F, consider approval of a site plan amendment for proposed building renovation and site improvements at one oh nine East Shadow Bend Avenue. Aubrey, staff comments?
So this is an existing lot in the downtown district at one oh nine East Shadow Bend Avenue. The property, the property owner...
If we could just either wait until after or a little outside, yeah. Just once, right? Thank you. We need this. I don't think I put any notes on there. Make sure.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I want you to get full attention.
I'm good, I'm good.
So there's an existing structure on the house that had a business in it before.
No, it was a residence.
It was a residence, okay. So they're raising the roof on the current structure to higher ceilings. Site improvements that are going to be required as part of the downtown district include a six-foot sidewalk along those street frontages. They are utilizing head-in parking and then some shared parking spaces across the street. First Baptist Church, we have an agreement with them. All of their head-in parking spaces are in the right-of-way, so those are all publicly available parking spaces. They are going to provide some handicap accessibility on their property. The owner is requesting that the commission consider an alternate landscape plan by allowing the existing trees to remain on the property account towards the requirement. There are big trees that wouldn't allow new ones to really survive, so. And whatever, the existing amount exceeds what would be required for the new trees. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Aubrey. Applicant, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Larry Fly, I'm the owner. The business is going to be moving into this building.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to present before we get to our discussion?
Other than the fact that we think it's a fantastic improvement to what was there before, it maybe will encourage, you know, additional rehabs in that particular area for commercials in place.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome to stand in case there's other questions, or you can sit either. Okay, comments? This time we'll shake it up and start with Mr. Rice.
I've been out there a few times, seen all those trees. I agree, it'd be hard to find somewhere to plant more trees, at least that are not, I mean, the one spot you could do it isn't noticeable from the street or park.
One hundred-year-old cypress sitting on that property, and probably it's a forty, fifty-year-old pecan tree, which is fantastic.
I appreciate you guys saving the big ones.
Commissioner Mann?
Absolutely with the trees. I'd much rather have the old trees sitting there, so great, great on that. The head-in parking, is that like immediately across the street? Is that what we're talking about? Yeah, perfect, okay, yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, Commissioner Phillips?
I agree on the trees. I really like the idea of the existing trees being there.
Commissioner Conrad?
Yeah, the trees are great, the large trees, but also the facade, everything about it looks really, really good. I like the veneer that you're putting over the brick, the large doors, everything about it. It makes it look more modern, up-to-date, something that is very, it adds, enhances the city. I like it.
We really like it. We've been looking for a long time. We very, very close to several properties in Pearland, and our business has been in Friendswood for twenty-two years. And we really want it to be improved. So this opportunity presented itself. It was, it's a risk for us, we're a small business. It's a big risk to take on something like this, but we've got some people working with us that, you know, share our vision and helped us navigate through the, you know, the challenges and figured it out because, you know, this is not what we do for a living, you know, so. But anyway, we think it's going to be great. We're very excited about it.
So on the fence, is that, are you just updating the existing fences? Are there going to be a new fence?
Oh, yeah, we're going to put a new fence up, all lights all the way around the fences. It'll be solar lights, but it'll be a two-part fence, you know, six foot and then another foot and a half above that with kind of a somewhat, you know, picket type. Just very professional. We also know that we need to make the property presentable and usable for other businesses. Like, for example, if something happens to our company, you know, medical, dentists, attorneys. So we put all of that into consideration, making it as valuable, a piece of real and beautiful office space for general purpose use. So the interior, I think, is pretty much better than the exterior facade. It's fantastic how we got it, we were able to get that laid out with the really high ceilings.
And just for everybody's information, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in the downtown district, residential cannot be rebuilt, right? It's got to go to commercial, so.
Right.
And I like that there's going to be some good sidewalks along there, too, so I appreciate it.
I have one more totally odd question. There used to be a pool.
Yeah.
Did you filled it in or, because there's like grass there and everything now, okay.
We dug it up and...
I didn't know if I was crazy, but, okay, awesome, thank you.
Insurance people didn't want us...
Yeah, I figured so.
Thank you, so you can sit now. Okay, we have a motion. Motion to approve? Commissioner Rice and Commissioner Conrad? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Item G, consider approval of a site plan amendment for Industry Park, Friendswood Phase Two, located at four five hundred and four five fifty-two FM twenty-three fifty-one. Staff comments, Aubrey?
Yes.
Ditto.
So we consider this item on June twenty-sixth, a site plan amendment for Industry Park Two. The scenario that had changed at that time was that we changed the landscape ordinance to give the commission more latitude to be able to waive the requirement of the buffer trees, which you all did. But there was, the approval was that they still needed to plant six additional trees throughout the site. So the owner is now, the question on the table tonight is that they would like the commission to consider six of the nine trees, the crepe myrtles that are planted in the median of the entrance into Timber Creek Golf Course. There's two, like, office warehouse buildings of this development that face the road. Yeah, they're, yeah, they're circled on the presentation. So there's nine crepe myrtles there, and they're asking that six of those be counted as the six trees that y'all requested at the June meeting.
Okay, and the applicant is not here, so we'll go to discussion. And before we, I'll go ahead and start with one question real quick. So right now, we're just deciding if those trees should count. This isn't approving anything or declining anything other than that?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Mann?
So originally, I was, or I guess in June, I wasn't sure what they meant by those additional trees because we discussed that then. So if we're only discussing this of those nine trees that are over there, it's not on the property. They did plant them. I'm leaning towards saying, okay, it's adjacent to the property, they added trees to it. What is the benefit of the six trees that we're requiring that they put on their property that we don't get from the trees that are up there right there? That's my kind of just a common sense test. Is that sufficient? What do we want? We want trees in Friendswood, we want it to look nice, and you're going to see those before you're going to see any of the others, and they planted them. I'm not necessarily that I like the process in which this played out. And so there, I'm hesitant to be as lenient as I'd like to be, but I think in this case, it makes the most sense. So I think that I'm okay with the six, the six of the nine, all nine, you can say whatever you want, of those to be, because I don't think we're going to get better by them putting six other trees somewhere on that property. Hopefully it made sense in that whole...
Can I dovetail off that one?
Commissioner Mann? Or Commissioner Rice, sorry?
Sorry to jump in line there. I don't disagree with that so much, but what I do disagree, well, the whole history of that aside, I still would like to see some trees on the other side of the property where they save. She even says in her letter that there is room to put trees over by the aerial easement on the east side. That's where I would lean towards keeping the six trees and not approving the crepe myrtles or the existing crepe myrtles, if that makes sense. I feel like they're just grasping at straws because they just don't want to do it. And I feel like not only is there room to do it, but I feel like it would enhance driving into Friendswood if we had something there other than the dilapidated wood fence. And I drove by twice today looking at it, just trying to wrap my head around it. And I just think, as one of the main arteries into the city, it would look nice if we had something. I don't care what kind of tree it is, as long as it fits our requirement. But I feel like that particular spot there could really use something, and that's why I'm going to vote to keep, to stand with what we said before and keep the six trees.
Can I, just putting thoughts out, because I agree with you, and I drove by it as well, and I think that that would be a great spot for trees. What if they picked six of those that they planted already and put them over there? Would we then be happy?
I would.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Conrad?
Somewhere along on this, I read where, we have three of the trees that if you plant them there will be. The root system will be real close to the gas lines and communication lines, is that correct?
That's, that was explained in her email.
In her email.
Yeah.
And then the other ones will be, the other three will be directly below, I mean, yeah, below the power lines. So I'm kinda in agreement with them that we need to find another location perhaps for them. Now they also added, added extra trees on the esplanade by the golf club, golf course. And that added nine extra crepe myrtles. So it looks to me like there's enough trees, the, the history behind all of this. It seems to me that they just don't wanna comply with the things that we, that the city requires. So, I mean, that's just my comment on it.
Okay, like Commissioner Phillips?
Well, I don't know all the history, I don't, I think it predates my, my tenure here. But, but I will say that it does seem like that there was an agreement to have a certain number. And then we've gone down and down and, cause I wanna say, I don't, I don't remember exactly, but I wanna say it was thirty-something to begin with.
Yeah, thirty-four was the original.
I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was, so, so here we are now, down, we keep shrinking it down. And so I would say, I, I, I think I'm more in line with saying, well, I don't wanna consider the crepe myrtles as part of the nine.
For me, it's kind of a, you, you know, you're talking about a separate property these trees are on. But in our, in our tree ordinance, we do allow for planting a tree on somebody else's property with approval, right? So, so it kinda fits under that in a way. Personally, I do feel on the opposite side of the property that there, I, I believe there's room for at least some crepe myrtles there. Just my, my thoughts on it. Anybody else?
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you, like that was my comment on the process. I do think we, we have the ability to waive so that you can put a tree on another property. Literally if you put those trees on that side, we'd be happy, but they did it on one side. Well, if they had put them in the back behind or between two buildings, we, we wouldn't be able to say anything because it's on the property, right? So where they place them, I, I don't wanna let my yearning for proper, following rules properly to overtake my common sense of, they got the trees down, we've got it there. I, I, but I do understand what everybody has said, cause I, cause I agree with that as well. That's it.
Okay, so we're voting, or we're gonna vote on if those trees count to just clear the site plan, correct?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Can I make a motion to deny?
You can just make the motion to approve and then you get the second and then if you wanna vote against it, vote against it, it's the easiest.
Commissioner Rose, do we have a second?
Yes, I will second to approve it.
Commissioner Mann? Okay, we have a motion, a second. This is to approve, goes forward. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
I have a question. To approve exactly what?
So if we approve this, we're saying we agree that those trees will meet the requirements and the site plan is approved.
So the six trees and the six crepe myrtles that are marked will, will go to, they're nine trees that we were saying that they needed.
They stay where they're at, but they count towards.
And in the same location as what we had on the original.
No, we're saying that we approve it the way it's sitting right now.
By the way, it's right there, okay.
Okay, uh, okay, so all in favor? Okay, all, all against? Okay, two to three fails. Alright, item six, discussion. Discuss, discuss lot coverage requirements in the single-family residential SFR zoning district as contained in the residential regulation matrix contained in section seven P and/or section twenty definitions of appendix C zoning of the city code. Becky, staff somewhere?
Yes, sir, so the subcommittee, the ordinance subcommittee met and discussed it. And Ms. Phillips will kinda give y'all an overview of what we discussed. There's nothing to vote on tonight, this is just, we can get kind of a head nod if you wanna leave it as is, make changes. Make, you know, whatever recommendations you want, so no official vote tonight.
Commissioner Phillips, you have thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes? Okay, so I'll talk very slowly. Okay, we, we had a, a meeting about this specifically. We tried to come up with pros and cons, okay, that's kinda how we approached it as we were discussing this. And it was, it was Willie and myself and then Becky. And so, as we talked through it, what we seemed to be in agreement on was that we do not have a history of this request, we haven't had multiple requests for this change. We also don't have a large group of residents that are requesting this. This is one particular developer asking for this change. We had concerns with the, with the infill lots that are existing within our community that if someone were to come in and then build on that lot after we were, if we made this change. That's not necessarily going to be harmonious with the other existing homes that are already built. And if you're an existing homeowner that has one of those lots adjacent to you and they come in and they have a larger home built next to you. Your choice is to move, because it's really have, we will have made that change. So, I, I think at the end of the day, when we, when we discussed it, there wasn't a really compelling argument for us to say, well, yes, we should make this change. We did like the language that staff had, had put together and Marcus, you also had put that together. We feel like that, that if that was something that council had wanted to move forward with at a later date, that that, that language is already there. And we felt like that that was very comprehensive. So, so I guess what I'm saying is that we didn't really have a strong feeling yes or a strong feeling no. And because of, you know, I, I'll just add in my own opinion on this, that ninety-something percent of our homes in, in Friendswood have already been built out. And it seemed to work just fine for all of the rest of the homes that have already been built. So I think that our position is to not change it at this point.
Good, any comments?
I think along those lines, like you said, it was rare, you know, this one time, place, until you say, yes, you can do it. And then everybody's gonna go, oh, then you're gonna start seeing that come out more often, so. I, I think I agree with you.
Yeah, and just the clarification we'll put with everything is that, you know, when you compare us to other neighboring cities, the, the criteria are different. So we do not include pools, we do not include other paved areas, it's just the parts under roof, correct?
Yes.
So, when you look at some of the numbers, some of them look higher, but that's why.
One of the things I was thinking about with this, and I talked to somebody about it. Look at the lots that Augusta Kelly's building over here, behind Shipley's. And you drive by those and they look enormous on those lots. And they're still within the percentage, so imagine those being even bigger. I just, I, I think we're losing part of what, not only our, our identity as Friendswood, if we let that get too tight and too big, but also. It just feels uncomfortable to me.
Any other comments?
I would add, I know some of the planned unit developments throughout the city might have different percentages. But those were approved as a package deal and it affects those properties and those properties only.
Right.
Whereas, you know, I think the point of the infill lots is a very, I think that's an important.
Yeah, that's very important.
Yeah.
But also, those instances come with amenities for the city too.
Yeah, and open space, you know, there, those properties are difficult to develop for whatever, you know, shapes and different things like that. So there's a lot more to, that goes into the consideration of a PUD, you know, versus just our straight.
Even like Adams subdivision here. There, there's still all the people around it. It, it's still an infill lot, if you ask me.
Yeah.
It's just a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
That's my, you're correct?
No, I agree, I mean, I think the way it is, we shouldn't leave it like that.
Okay, I think we're good unless, uh, city council wants something different. Next, communications. I receive an update regarding the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance updates, GLO RCP grant, Aubrey?
So this is probably gonna be a, a regular thing in our agenda now. We have a third-party consultant that is starting our comprehensive plan update. Yay! So, our DURA group is the consultant that we're working with. They attended council's meeting on Monday night, introduced themselves. They have partners, Kim Lee Horn and CDS are two partners that are gonna help with the comp plan. So, this is going to replace our nineteen ninety-eight outdated comprehensive plan and hopefully give the city of Friendswood a new vision, like for twenty more years. So it's a very important study, I know we kinda worked on pieces of it. I've given them my dra- I'm gonna give them my draft of what all we did have done, so hopefully we can still use pieces of that. But their process is gonna be so much more comprehensive.
On that topic, does the, the, sub, the comprehensive plan subcommittee, I don't know. Can, do we, are we gonna get a chance to sit down?
Yes.
Because their vision is maybe not Friendswood's vision, right? And I, I don't know that a, that a, you know, consultant knows what Friendswood wants and needs and that. So I, I would like to be able to talk to them and see what they're thinking and, and go through that with them.
Yes, so the planning subcommittee is you, Brian and Marcus. So y'all are going to help through this process. So our planning subcommittee need, or duties are gonna kick in.
I don't normally sign myself up for more meetings, but I like this, this is good, let's do it, yeah.
So, the consultant is going to be at our next planning and zoning commission meeting, so they'll be here to formally introduce themselves to all of us. We have had, we had a teams meeting with staff, like basically all the directors and staff members that are gonna be involved in the input. And that report of that meeting was in your backup material. October twenty-sixth is a Sunday from five to seven. They are, we're gonna do a public outreach event at Halloween in the park. So kinda like what we did before with the future land use map, Travis. So.
I remember well.
So if any of the planning subcommittee members want to attend that event and help with it, that would be much appreciated. There, we're gonna have some.
If you don't mind real quick, even if.
Sunday the twenty-sixth?
The, yes, Sunday the twenty-sixth.
If, if, nobody from, from the planning can make it, at least extend it to everybody else too and just.
Yeah.
It'd be good if we at least had some presence there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But who, how many can show up?
Three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, the planning subcommittee is three people, so I'll get with y'all, if you're planning to attend, then we'll just call it done. But if anybody can't, then I'll let everybody else know so that we have three there. They're planning, so there will be a, there's gonna be a community-wide like survey with a QR code. So they'll have extra like laptops there for people, if they wanna do the survey there, you can scan it and do it on your phone. Or I think if you, I think they're gonna have some giveaways and, you know.
So it's gonna be better than the one we did?
Yes, yeah. They're professionals.
Yes, okay, okay.
So, and just a little bit, so Lotta was the director of community development for the city of Pearland for sixteen or seventeen years. She was there when I left Pearland a long time ago, she retired from there. She's like my planning hero, so. I have a lot of respect for her and, like I said, we worked together a long time ago, so it's kinda neat to be able to come back and work with her again. So, her and her team, well, it'll be a good product, so. But the challenge is knocking this out in one year. So we're gonna do the comprehensive plan the first year and then the second year we'll be updating the zoning ordinance to make any changes as a result of that comprehensive plan to bring us in line with the plan, so.
Be a lot.
Yes. Yeah. So, the other part of that that I'm working on right now is a, a comprehensive plan advisory committee. So the, the three planning subcommittee members are automatically on that advisory committee. So it's gonna be like eighteen to twenty people. So I'm looking at, I have Brian Friedman from Bay Hup is gonna help volunteer. I have a couple of people from CEC, I have a representative from CCISD. We have Debbie is our consultant for CRS, she also lives in Friendswood. That's our community rating system for hazard mitigation and flooding prevention. She's gonna be on it with us, so I think we have a lot of good opportunities. If y'all have anybody else, you know, that y'all think of, Tom, Tom sent me a great list and some good suggestions, so I've been emailing people. We will probably meet maybe mid next week to kinda, hopefully I'll have a, I think I have eleven or twelve people already. So we can meet like midweek next week, I'm hoping to have, council has to appoint, the mayor has to appoint this committee. So I'm hoping for that to be on the November agenda.
I'll send you my list tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, and then our DURA will be here for, at the next meeting, so that's about it.
I just, I just wanna help, I encourage participation at the, that event because, Marcus, not, not you, different Marcus. But we did it at the, the farmer's market when we're doing the future land use map. It's very interesting to get out there and just get the, get the direct feedback from, from the community, so if you can make it, it'll be a good opportunity. Okay, next. Announcement of the Planning Zoning Commission regular meetings for Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five and Thursday to December eleventh, twenty twenty-five. And I didn't have it on here, but our, our annual retreat is December fourth.
Wednesday, December third.
Okay, Wednesday, December third.
Yeah. And that, our retreat's gonna be at city hall since we're having our regular meetings over here.
Seriously, it'll be, it's, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be upstairs.
Next month will be at Mr. Matranga's house. Alright, next, receive the August twenty-twenty-five DRC report, that's in your backup material, but Aubrey, you have anything?
Uh, no.
I'll receive the August twenty-twenty-five business report, Aubrey?
Nope, it was in your backup material too, I was, August twenty-twenty-five was the first month in the eighteen years I've been here that we did not issue one new single-family home permit. Zero. So, we need Friendswood Trails in Georgetown to get that one, so, yeah.
Next, city council updates from our liaison, Councilmember Matranga.
This center section here.
We, we brought a crowd for you.
Appreciate that, I appreciate that. City council did meet on Monday, October sixth. And on relate things, items and topics related to P and Z. We did also get an update on the comprehensive plan, a little bit longer than what Aubrey just gave you, but, but things that you're very familiar with. So we got a little bit more in-depth of what the process was gonna look like and so forth on the comprehensive plan update, looking forward to that. And you say a year, huh?
It's planned.
Good luck, we need a lot of help. We also approved on the first reading the capital improvements advisory committee language for, you know, the creation. We went through all the boards and all the different committees and that one we're pulling out of P and Z as part of the changes for the, that our state legislature gave us the opportunity to do.
And, and so we, we talked about that, that, we did the language for that on first reading. And then also on first reading, we did some cleanup on the sidewalk installation fund, just kinda cleaned up remnants of. We did away with that, what, a year, two years ago? And, and just did that, as related to P and Z, those were the topics and I'll be hanging around afterwards if anybody has any other questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Uh, we'll continue with communications and comments from our commissioners, uh, Commissioner Phillips?
I just, I appreciate everybody preparing so well for these meetings, um, Becky was very helpful at our, at our subcommittee meeting that we had. That was my first subcommittee meeting, that was good, um, no, glad to be here.
Commissioner Conrad?
Yeah, thank you for all the help, and I do have a question completely different from here, what, what's being built where the old area's florist used to be?
Stepanos.
Byu Gardens, the old Byu Gardens, the green one.
Little greenhouse, the little green building that was there.
Uh, it's owned by the man that owns Stephanos, Pizzeria, so he's looking to do something new there. We don't have details.
Okay, Commissioner man?
Uh, well, I appreciate the staff, we even have applicants saying they appreciate the staff, so that's. I mean, that's incredible, so great work, thank you for everybody making really good questions. I like the debate, um, on topics and I appreciate everybody's, uh, ideas. And other than that, I'm happy to be here.
Commissioner Rose?
I was at Monday's city council meeting and I felt like their presentation might have lasted about a year. Hopefully they'll con- they'll make it a little more concise for us, that, uh, but it is good to see that coming, coming along. That, that'll be an exciting change the city needs. I was wondering that the ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight is the last time we really did that. But the twenty, Vision twenty twenty was not part of that, it was like adjacent to it, wasn't it?
Yes, but it was also drafted in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, yeah, so I was just curious, because I don't, they, they're not one in the same.
No, no, uh, but, uh, Blaise Gazetta was there on the committee for the nineteen ninety-eight Vision twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And he is gonna, he wants to be on this new committee to get the next vision, so. Full circle. Have him on this one as well.
Not next week, but the week after is the A P A conference.
Yes.
So looking forward to that. That's all.
I appreciate all y'all's work, it, uh, it shows.
Hard work getting this here tonight.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, we like the new facilities.
Had to drive extra.
Me too.
Short for me. Okay, and with that, thank you everyone for attending this evening and our October ninth, twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is now adjourned.